So, um, thank you, um, for those of us who are here. I did put an agenda together for us today. And there are four items on the agenda. Uh, the first item, um, was going to be a report of committee, uh, from Frank, uh, Jean and myself regarding the, uh, what we called the consultant subcommittee to talk about, you know, how do we, uh, pull the various levers of power to, um, to get some of the attention that we were looking for on the grant fundings and, uh, specifically the plan, um, for the city that we want to see around, um, what, what's the title of it? Would be a digital equity plan? Is that what it's called or? I think that's the name of it.
Right.
So, uh, we have not, uh, met with any of those stakeholders. I think we talked about meeting with PVP, uh, Partner Valley Planning Commission. And, uh, we have not done that, obviously. Um, recent developments for Frank have, um, have really understandably curtailed that effort. So, um, I don't have a, a report to make. I don't think Jean does, um, on that question. If she does, I'll invite her to, jump in, but, um, that was, that was the first item.
Mm-hmm. Just minimally, and forgive me if I already said this, um, that when I met with the consultants or people organizing communities to work, um, get paperwork together to be assigned to consultants, they said, they asked if the library would be the municipal department, um, to meet with the mayor and get the mayor's sign off on this. Um, and that there has, there has to be, uh, forgive me, because I had told Counselor Fenton this, I had to take the afternoon off to take my mom to a medical appointment. So I don't have my folder in front of me, but I think they told me it has to be a municipal official, uh, uh, someone like me, uh, basically to bring together meetings, uh, work with the consultants, not that I would be doing all of the work, but they're just as a, um, I don't know, focal point, so to speak. The consultants would be doing the work, meeting with lots of the, um, stakeholders and residents and so forth. So, but we had to get the mayor's buy-in to it. Um, that's a requirement as well. So, I think that's one of the things we wanted to make happen in, um, in the subcommittee, but understandably, it didn't come together, uh, with Frank being unable to join.
Um, we will, um, we will continue before the next meeting to do that work and, um, we'll follow up. Um, so the, the other three items, just to tell you what they are that I have on the agenda was, um, to hear from, uh, Roberta and Will, and I know that Justin, Alex and Charlie were also on this, uh, engagement subcommittee that we talked about, and I saw some emails from Roberta, so I'll, I'll turn it over to them in a second. And then the only other two items I have on the agenda for today are to talk about new assignments for the subcommittees and, uh, our next meeting. So, um, does anybody from the engagement subcommittee wanna, uh, weigh in?
Yeah, I have a report, but before we do that, I'm sorry, could there just be clarification on the earlier point? Cause I, I wasn't quite sure on whose behalf Jean was having that conversation.
Thank you. Um, so I had, was contacted by some folks who are looking to get that, and please, somebody correct me if I'm pulling up the wrong initials or, or names, but looking to get that, uh, paperwork together so that we could Springfield, we Springfield, uh, as a city could qualify for the grant from the, what is it? Uh, rolls off Frank's tongue. It's obviously not rolling off mine, the, the municipal, uh,
Massachusetts Broadband Institute.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, that funding, which will come from the feds, uh, but one of the key things that has to happen is there has to be buy-in by the mayor and there has to be identified someone who's a municipal official in the sense that I'm a deputy department, uh, deputy director of a department, municipal department, has to be somebody who is a point person, whether that's just calling and hosting meetings or, um, helping the consultants understand who the stakeholders are, that kind of thing. So that means-
Yeah, thank you. Where my confusion is, um, is that it just wasn't clear to me to what extent, um, you were speaking of something which is essentially a follow-up to what Frank was briefing us on, as opposed to something that our working group had decided to do.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that they are, you know, clearly the two things complement one another, but I just wanted to be clear in my own mind because you were talking about, you know, who would be speaking with the stakeholders and, and so forth from among the consultants. And we hadn't discussed, our working group hadn't discussed that at all. So it just was a little confusing to me.
It is confusing because there were a lot of different entities looking to address digital equity and learning digital skills. And I think that's some of the naughty part of this to untangle or maybe, and then knit together in a better way, um, so that we're not, you know, duplicating efforts or, um, or getting in each other's way. And I, I could see once these consultants who are already identified would be paid through this federal money, once that's established, they are going to be so happy, I think, to have the work that you've already done in your subcommittee, um, and you will be doing so that they know what plan looks, um, appropriate for local folks and who stakeholders are and communities to, to, um, to focus on are.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. I mean, I'm actually on my phone. I'd sent out an email a couple of hours ago that I was having intermittent power outages at my house. So the power is on, but I don't feel, um, I don't want to turn on my computer and have the, the lights start flickering again, which is what was happening while I was on my computer earlier. Um, so I sent, I sent out a copy of the slides. I don't know if everyone got it. Um, Michael, if you saw the email that I sent about an hour and a half ago, there's a PDF attachment which has the slides. Did you have?
I didn't, um, and I don't, I'm in the city council office. I don't have access to my email right on this PC. Um, but if somebody else does, they can call it up. I can give them authority to share their screen.
Right. If someone could do that, I'd appreciate it. I don't-
If you make me call, I could do that because I have it in front of me.
Okay, let me do that. All right, there you go, Jean. You can do it. The lights just went off in City Hall. I gotta turn them on. It's not like, it's like Minot Show Regional. They actually do shoot off here.
I used to work in an office that had those motion detector things on the lights. And if it didn't see you move for like 15 minutes, it turned off the light.
Exactly.
Which was terrible because my desk was so far from the motion detector. I had to like wave at the motion detector every 15 minutes. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
All right. So that's our, that's our subcommittee. Um, we met on May 29th. The report I'm gonna give isn't minutes so much because as it turned out, Alex and I were the only two who were, um, able to meet together. Uh, Justin did prepare a, um, a draft with his ideas on the engagement plan. So we worked with that. William had the time confused, unfortunately.
Again, I apologize. I was working my second job. I didn't realize that I RSVP'd for the holiday weekend. So I apologize again on that one.
That's, that's okay. That's okay. It's under, understood. When I realized it was the holiday, I'm like, did any of us realize today was a holiday? Um, and then Charlie sent comments to the draft that I circulated after, um, I met with Alex. Yeah, Jean, if you could move to the next page, please.
So you see, you see the next slide now? I just want to make sure.
I do, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, so this is what we were charged with, right? Is the first step was to do a stakeholder analysis, which would consist of, you know, who, who would we want to speak to in the community engagement? Who are our priority groups and how to reach those different groups? So if you go to the next slide, please, the next page. All right. So, um, what we decided was that we did want to emphasize those groups that in various, um, programs, including, I think, the one Jean that you were referring to earlier, they're referred to as covered populations and underrepresented communities that have been identified as disproportionately impacted by digital inequity. So what we did was to go through those groups, and then to identify for the city of Springfield, how the, you know, what, what's the demographics for those groups? And how, um, does, does digital inequity factor into those particular groups? And I mentioned here that there was some regrouping because the federal agencies, while they may be referring to the same groups, sometimes use different terminology. So in order to, so I did a little bit of regrouping because of that redundancy. And one of the first groups was low-income households. And in Springfield, uh, just over 26% of the population is below the federal poverty line. Um, what I had difficulty with was finding out what the federal property poverty line was. But it's somewhere between, um, 20 and $30,000 a household, depending on how many, if you have two or three people, goes up a little bit, um, for each additional person. And of the people in Springfield who are considered to be, um, living below the poverty line, uh, just over 43% of those households, uh, if they're, if they have less than $20,000, have no internet subscriptions. Right? So they don't subscribe to any internet, um, service. Then the next band was between 20 and $75,000, which was a huge band. Um, some of which would be below the poverty line, but a good portion of it was above. So I didn't even include that here. And then the map shows, um, the distribution in Springfield of where most of those households are found, which is pretty much all of Springfield, um, scattered throughout all of Springfield, some areas more so than others, but it's very widespread terms of where impoverished households reside. Uh, the next slide, please. Persons with disabilities, um, of, of Springfield residents under the age of 65, it's almost 16% of the population. For those persons 65 and older who still live, um, in their own households, uh, 40, close to 42% are considered disabled. And among the disabled, here I couldn't get a Springfield figure, but nationwide, um, of the disabled, a large portion have no, 38% have no computers, uh, 28% have no smartphones, 53% have no tablets and 28% have no broadband. Um, so it's clearly a large portion of the people living with disabilities who are impacted by this. For Springfield, the indigenous or Native American population is quite small. It's roughly one-half of 1%. Um, here again, I was able to find figures on, you know, what portion of that uh, have no computers or internet subscriptions. It's both are over 10% who do not, but the population itself is very small in number. Um, then there is the group that I've referred to as members of minoritized ethnic and racial groups. Uh, the federal government refers to them as minorities, not minoritized. And the reason I changed it to minoritized is that for the city of Springfield, it's actually 71% of the population. So it's not a minority. Springfield is a majority-minority city. Um, minoritized is a term that's used when groups have the challenges that minorities would typically have in the United States, the social, economic and other, um, challenges, even though they may not be a minority of the population. Um, and in the larger, um, report, the more detailed one that I sent out a few days ago, it's broken down by, you know, Latino or Hispanic, Black or African-American, um, Asian. There's a, a group called two or more races in the census and so forth. And in terms of internet and, um, hardware access, it ranges anywhere from, um, 0.2% to close to 12% of households with no computers. Uh, the smallest on one end is the Asian population. Um, it seemed as though almost every Asian household had compute, and it was computer, smartphone and tablet grouped together, right? Almost everyone did. On the other end, the Latino and Black or African-American households tended to, um, be around, 11, 12% of those households did not have computers. And you see the same thing with the internet, the Asian households. Um, only one and a half percent had no internet. And then on the higher end, closer to 9% were the Latino and the African-American or Black households. Uh, the next group was people with language barriers. And here, um, of people in Springfield over five years old, 16.7% self-identified as speaking English less than very well. I couldn't find a figure to tell me whether or not they had internet access or, um, whatever. Women make up just over half of the population of Springfield. Um, I could not find here figures on digital issues. However, the women in Springfield, a large number live below the poverty line, 71%. So since, um, you know, since so many people in Springfield who are impoverished, um, do suffer digital inequity, I think it's reasonable to assume that women fall largely within that category. Um, the next grouping that the federal government has identified is LGBTQI plus persons. And here I was not able to get, um, demographic figures. I don't know if there's ever been a survey that has, um, quantified that group in Springfield. Uh, then there was aging individuals. Here it's of the overall population, just over 12 and a half percent or 65 and older. Um, among the seniors, 22% have income below the poverty line. In the country overall, within that group, uh, over 12 and a half percent of the households have no computer, smartphone or tablet. Um, just over 13% have no internet. Veterans in Springfield are 2.8% of the population. Um, the vast majority of these are Vietnam War era or following, um, the two Gulf Wars populations. I wasn't able to find digital information on that group. Uh, members of religious minorities, I don't have any details that I was able to find, demographic or otherwise. Um, incarcerated, there's, there's a holding facility in Springfield, but I don't, as far as I know, and Michael, you can correct me with this, there's no prison in Springfield. Um, there is some data available on how many people get released every year from a prison into Springfield. The number is not very, um, large. And then rural inhabitants and Mike and I had some question about whether, I'm sorry, Alex and I had some question about whether or not that was, um, that was a group that we should include. And Charlie, um, commented very helpfully that there, and he said that he actually grew up in a rural community. So he had a sense of what it was like. And he felt that there were some parts of Springfield that have similarities with rural communities, especially when it comes, and if you go to the next page, please, to what has sometimes been called food deserts, but now gets the long-term of low income and low access to a supermarket um, communities. And I was able to find a map to that. And these are people who live as many people in Springfield do, at least a half mile to a mile or more away from a supermarket. And you can see there on the map that this is, basically everybody in Springfield is practically living in what would be considered a desert, food desert. And the next page, um, Charlie mentioned was in terms of public transportation, that there's, there are many people who do not have um, public transportation within a reasonable walking distance from where they reside. So I kept them in, even though, even though Springfield is a city because the way in which, um, people live in some parts of the city has resemblances to rural communities as opposed to urban. Okay, so the next page, we felt that while those 12 groups, um, very rightfully should be considered priority, um, groups for our attention, that the working group should not limit itself to those groups because we felt that there were some other groups within Springfield who were very much impacted by digital inequities, um, starting with schoolchildren um, who make up a large portion of Springfield's population, relatively a quarter of the population. And of them, we found that 12 and a half percent of enrolled students have no computers, tablets or smartphones, nor internet subscriptions at home. And then we felt also that, um, we needed to look at educational institutions, both formal and non-formal. Non-formal would be things like boys and girls clubs that have classes, but they're not schools, right? Um, and then what I refer to as geographically disadvantaged areas, um, which on the next page you can see, and this is based on the census data, these are areas where there seems to be a concentration of people with no internet access in Springfield or no computer, smartphone or tablet. And I was really struck at how concentrated that is, uh, geographically, while the, um, impoverished population is very wide spread and dispersed, right? So it surprised me and I, I mentioned this to Michael. And you know, we, I decided that I would reach out to Frank to see if it was consistent with the data that he'd been finding. And then of course, um, you know, it's not appropriate at this time to nag Frank over, over this. So I still need to see if it's just that I'm misunderstanding something in the data or if there really is this concentration. And if the concentration does exist, I think it's important to, for us to find out why it exists. You know, I'm just gonna throw this out very hypothetically. Um, this happens to be downtown Springfield where this concentration is. And it could be that because there's so many businesses there, that perhaps, um, households have a harder time getting access because they have all these businesses that are also tapping into the grid down there. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out as a possibility. It seems kind of striking to me. Uh, the next page, we also said that houseless persons, and here I want to thank Mike because it's a term that I wasn't familiar with, the difference between homeless and houseless. But houseless persons, as I understand it, um, Mike are persons that really have no place to live. Um, they're not in shelters or, you know, other alternative housing situations. And here we have just over 1,700, um, people in 2022, according to HUD, in Springfield who are houseless. And then the other groups we would want to reach out to neighborhood councils, community-based organizations, social service organizations and small businesses. Then the next page starts out by saying, we need to start engagement as soon as possible because we're already in June. And I believe our target deadline, Mike, is the end of the year.
Yes, uh, actually November.
November, worse yet. So we definitely need, um, to get started. That's not through any fault of our own. It's just the reality of the calendar. Um, we felt that, you know, we didn't want just a typical survey that says, do you have this? Do you have that? We wanted to find ways to find out from people what their goals and aspirations are with respect to, um, digital access, et cetera. So we came up with a list of possible methods, um, of reaching out. It included mailers, which was something that, um, Mike had mentioned at the last meeting. We would, we were just a little concerned that perhaps for some of these groups, mailers would not be the most effective way. Um, so we didn't rule out mailers. We just said we need a variety of ways to reach out to people depending on what their circumstances are. So we, in addition to mailers, suggested community chats or focus groups. And there was question here about whether or not it would be possible to have cash or other material incentives um, when these groups gathered. And there's a list there of, you know, where we thought these groups might be situated, senior centers, schools, et cetera. Um, kiosks or tabling, and here libraries came in for a great deal of praise as a place where people, um, various residents of Springfield go to the libraries, uh, the parks and also this being, um, we're getting into the summertime.
Excuse me. Sorry.
It's okay. We're getting into the summertime. So there are a lot of activities that are coming up where we thought, you know, we could- It's okay. We're getting into the summertime, so there are a lot of activities that are coming up where we thought, you know, we could have some kind of presence, whether it's a kiosk or a table, where we can have some sort of engagement with people. That is not meant to be a total list, it's just a starting point of what activities there are over the next couple of months. And then we said that public participation, it needs to be recorded, there needs to be a report back to the communities so they don't just feel like we're, you know, we heard you, but we're not sufficiently respectful to report back. And that the reporting back should take a number of different forms, which is listed there. And then the other stakeholders that we have not yet done an analysis of, but that we need to do some analysis of. And then in this case, these are stakeholders who are more on the service provider side. So it's the internet providers, it's the city councilors, since we're a working group of the city council. We thought also the state representatives. We should speak to community organizations that provide digital or internet services. There are a few places, the library was one, some of the senior centers do this, that provide training and educational work around digital literacy and the community in general. And then what you see at the bottom of that page is the top of an Excel spreadsheet. It's a tracking sheet and it would have the different stakeholders on each line, the demographic information, the information we have on their digital access. And then across, you know, it's a way of tracking what they say their goals are, their aspirations, a gap analysis, which is, you know, where is this group now with, with respect to the goal for that group? And what's the goal? And then proposals for what to do to remedy the situation where there is digital inequity. And then finally, the last page, I had promised this would be a short presentation, it wasn't as short as I thought it would be, which is suggested overall goals for the working group. And here we said, we felt our recommendations had to be both in terms of policy and actual programs that might be implemented in order to achieve the goals that we felt it important to share information with groups like Alliance for Digital Equity, which is the one that Frank has been working with, as well as others who are already engaged in this kind of work, so that we complement one another and not reinvent the wheel. Sorry. That, again, the community needs to be informed of what the working group's decisions are. And here, the city council obviously has the decision-making to do around that, what form that would take. Since we're their working group, we're not, in that sense, we're not the working group of the residents of Springfield. But we do feel that, you know, it is important to provide feedback. And then finally, to evaluate the, the overall process of the engagement because if it's not us continuing into the new year, there'll be some other group that might benefit from seeing, you know, how we functioned, what were our successes, what were our challenges? And then each of us, of course, has our own other activities that we may individually be benefited by knowing, you know, what did our working group do? And, and what kind of, what did we accomplish, what were our challenges? And that is the last. So if there are any questions, comments, whatever.
Well done, Roberta.
Very good. Thank you, Roberta.
You're quite welcome, Alex and I did. We felt we accomplished a great deal, but we also wanted the other members of the group to take part, which is why this is not minutes of the meeting, but rather a draft that other people could add to, subtract from, whatever.
Well, I, I think it's really invaluable work. And in the time we have left, I would like, if you could just circle back, not just to these goals going forward, but also to, I think you had an enumerated list of about thirteen identified groups of, classic, yeah, maybe it was twenty. So let's just look quickly at this. So is this ranked in order in any way, order of priority, Roberta?
The first one through twelve, that's the order in the slide that Frank had as part of his presentation. And it's the order that a lot of the federal agencies use. But I wasn't seeing necessarily an order of priority in why they came up with this particular order.
And what about the other eight? What about thirteen through twenty?
Thirteen through twenty were the groups that Alex and I felt in Springfield, given our own experience, especially at the height of the pandemic, needed to be emphasized. Now, some of these groups, like the schoolchildren, within that group, there are a large number who live in households that are low income. So there is some overlap, but it's difficult to, you know, to pull out. And the way you address the problem of schoolchildren may not necessarily be the same way you address the challenge for an adult who has, you know.
Can you go back to one of the earlier screens where it said, sort of the mission, we're trying to identify who the people are, how we reach them. All right there, is it the next slide? Yeah, who do we want to talk to and how do we reach them? So it sounds like Roberta's group's done a lot of work on figuring out, who do we want to talk to? And there's these twenty categories. And now it seems like, how do we reach them speaks to the last slide, which is the goals, right, moving forward in a way? So could you go to the last slide, Jean? Thank you for being our guide here. Yeah, so.
The how do we reach them, I'm sorry, Michael, the how do we reach them actually starts where it says, we need to start engagement as soon as possible.
So, so I think, you know, I'm, I'm, I think in the time we have left, maybe we should spend the rest of the meeting talking about how do we build on this work now that we've got these twenty groups, we've got these suggested four goals, and begin some type of either community engagement plan or, yeah, start with a community engagement plan and then implementation in some respect.
I'm sorry, Jean, just for a moment, could you go back to the page that starts with, we need to start engagement as soon as possible? Yes, that one, thank you. Right? Because this one had actual suggestions for how we do the outreach.
Oh, I see, good. I see, Alex, you have your hand up.
Yes, I, I was going to add that how to reach them, we came up with the idea of the kiosk. And with the kiosk, individuals will be able to come over and speak to us, and we will be able to document the information. When we were talking, we felt that that was a, a good way of, of engaging individuals. Although the mailers are good ideas, the mailers do cost a lot of money. So our thought was, instead of spending a lot of money on mailers, we can take that money and use it for, you know, having a kiosk and doing the tabling at these different events or, you know, any other event that, that come up, that would engage the community. And if, you know, just looking at the libraries, neighborhood parks, and, and, you know, jazz, the Puerto Rican parade and things like that, Caribbean carnival, all of that is hitting all different levels of various communities. Of course, there's other activities and programs that is available too, that we can also include in this list. But at least it's a start. And these kiosks or tabling can also go into senior centers, it can go into the Boys and Girls Club, the Neighborhood Council and Association meetings, which we know Neighborhood Councils and Civic Associations, their meetings over the summer, they don't have summer meetings. Those meetings start back in September, but if we start to get a lot of these other things going, it, it would be really great to, to start and letting the community know that we are engaged. Also hitting all the different community centers because we have community, community centers all over Springfield. We have some in Northland, up at Greenleaf, you know, so some, you know, so many different ones that, that we can include and be involved with. So that's the way that we are going to be able to reach them. My, my thing is also too, I do continue to want to include people with disabilities. And one of the questions that I was going to have in regards to consultants, and I had raised my hand earlier in regards to that, is have we connected with any group organization that deals with individuals with disabilities? But anyway, that's, you know, my thought, my thought on how we can, you know, reach, reach individuals in the community.
Jean?
I agree with my colleagues and applaud everyone who helped with this plan. And looking at the slide that is still up there right now, two, point two is very thorough and point one is succinct. But I think it needs to be expanded so that we have some, a communication piece. Because when we're doing outreach, what is it that we want to ask people? Or what is it that we want to tell them about? Are we trying to just gather more data that might be more up to date than some of these, some of the census information and other data that we relied on to start painting the picture? Or do we need to, you know, talk with people to hear about? Aspirations is one of my favorite words. What is it that they would really like? What would it, what would it mean for them and their family to have good, to have digital equity, to have, be able to access online and internet resources at home or wherever it is they need to access them? So I think the, the missing piece so far, it's been a month. But the missing piece is what is the message? What are we trying to learn and what are we trying to communicate to people?
Well, I think that it's a terrific job. And the next question is, you know, what is, what do you, maybe Alex and Roberta think we go from here with this work product and this working group? How do we, are we at the implementation stage and how do you recommend we start to do that?
I, I would say that, that we are at the stage where we're ready to, to implement. Because there, I, I, I don't envision that we need to wait any longer. That's part of one, one of our challenges when we have working groups, is that we need to move. And right now, all of us, we're, we're professionals, we know how to do this, so let's just do it. And one of the things that I find to be very interesting is that we need to ask people what they want. Because they can tell you exactly what they want, what the vision is, what, what the problem is. Some people, they may be able to access the internet, but the, the challenge may be that there may not be a pole that connects. I don't know the, the right terminology for all of this stuff, but it may not be a pole in the area that connects them to the internet and all of those kind of things. So we need to ask individuals that, so let's put a, a timeframe on this, let's get a kiosk out there and, and just start doing it.
Well, I, I admire that enthusiasm. I think that we need probably content of some sort, we probably need like a document. And I think we also need a logistics plan. So if others feel differently, then, you know, we can certainly willing to defer. But I would, I would differ a little from what Alex said in that I think we should spend the time between now and the next meeting in this working group developing a logistics plan for the where and the when and the who for the outreach. And then also developing some type of content, so we're not talking about sending people into outreach circumstances without at least a uniform message. Even if it's not content to be shared, at least it's a, it's a talking point or an outline or a survey that gets developed that can be utilized to obtain data. I think that, that that's, that's where I think we go next. And then after that sort of logistical work is done, then we're talking about implementing this proposal along with whatever logistical issues we address in the next month. What do you think about that, Alex?
Yeah, that sounds good. That, that sounds good to have a plan laid out. Yes, most definitely.
Okay, I think as a, as a working group, we, I don't know if we could start the discussion tonight, given the time. But I think as a working group, we need to have some notion of what our goals are. Because I think our goal, personally, it's my understanding that it's the broad proposal about policy and program that we're giving to the city council, and the city council has to decide what they want to do or not do. As opposed to, let's say, the Alliance for Digital Equity, which is coming out with, with concrete programs that they're looking for funding for. Right? So I think we do need to have a clear understanding of, as the working group, what is our goal? In terms of the data collection, while it's not totally complete in terms of the demographics, I think we do have a lot of demographic information. So I would not suggest that we go and ask people, do you, do you have computer, do you have internet, whatever? But rather focus on the goals and aspirations of the different groups, which is like totally absent from the data.
I completely agree, Roberta. And so, and I, and to answer your question about sort of our charge, we're self-chartered here. But my impression and opinion, based on the meetings that we've had, is that we should strive to produce a document that can be submitted to the city council that outlines this. So if we have an outreach plan that includes logistics and content, but we don't implement necessarily by, you know, given our very short time window and the fact that we're all volunteers and have other things going on, I think building that into a comprehensive plan is really the most we can hope to achieve realistically in the upcoming, you know, five months that we have left here. So I would say if this working group could maybe build onto this presentation, some of the logistical questions and some of the content, and build that content, Roberta, around questioning or surveying people's desires, not people's current status, which is missing from the data, that would be an excellent supplement and make this presentation, I think, comprehensive enough that it could be plugged in to our end work product in this group.
And so potentially, part of that could be developing some questions or what have you that would, could be used to facilitate community chats or focus groups. Or even when you're tabling, you know, so not just, do you have a tablet or you don't have a tablet? We, we pretty, you know, we have a good sense of that, but trying to. We, we pretty, you know, we have a good sense of that, but trying to find out things like, wh- what would it mean to you? If, if you could do everything you needed to do, needed to do from home, online, or that kind of thing. Or what have you not been able to do? Um, what has been hard for you to accomplish? Because you don't have reliable internet access.
Right, like aspirational, aspiration instead of demographic. And, uh, and also, you know, this group is in a better position than anybody to assess the where. You know, like, what, like, like as specific as, as we can be, these are the schools, these are the libraries, these are the neighborhood groups or the events that we should be doing this at. And creating a, a hyper-specific uh, roadmap for how to do this, because if the work ends up getting done, uh, which we all hope and believe it will, it's going to get done by most likely consultants or grant awardees who aren't necessarily, don't have their same finger on the pulse of the city of Springfield and the neighborhoods here as we do. And so that's one of the value adds that we could, that we could provide as well in this plan. So.
So it goes back to the question of the consultants. How, how is the consultants being, um, you know, coming to the table in this regard? And then the other question is that, once we have this plan together, then is it, it, is it the consultants that is going to be implementing what we're putting together? Because that was not what my understanding is, so i- if, it, if you could clear that up for me, that'd be great.
Well, I wish I could, we're, we're sort of, you know, we're building, we're building the train while we're riding it. So, um, I don't know the answer to that, Alex. I, I do know that we don't have financial resources or sufficient, um, human resources to be able to implement something like this without substantial support from a funded organization. And, um, sure, maybe if we found the time and the energy, we could, we could bite off some small pieces of the engagement component, but I can't foresee that, that we would have the resources or the human capital to be able to commit to doing the, the full implementation of a plan like this. So I think the short answer is, we could do a very small piece of it if we're hyper-focused and we all work together on the implementation. But that may be, um, optimistic. I think realistically, a written plan that could then be implemented by others who are funded is better and more realistic.
Let me ask in terms of,
That makes sense.
In terms of focus groups or community chats, one of the things that Alex and I talked about was whether or not it would pop, be possible to have cash or some other material incentive. And we were wondering what the possibilities were of doing outreach to some of the, um, businesses in Springfield like Big Y, for example. The, the local banks and so forth to get some kind of support from them. So that, you know, at least if you have a focus group, we might be able to provide, um, a meal or a small, like a twenty-five dollar gift certificate, or, you know, some, some kind of incentive, gift card or whatever. Are those sorts of groups responsive to that kind of outreach, Michael? Do you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, if, if part of the ultimate implementation plan is that we conduct focus groups and you recommend in the plan that we reach out to local corporate partners to see if they would host and fund some minor incentive for participants? Yeah, I think that's on the table, we just need, you know, we need the, we need the woman power or the manpower to go out and, you know, make those relationships, ask, ask those folks to do that, and then to coordinate, um, those events. But if that, if that was a recommendation of this committee, I would, I would support it and help implement it. So. All right, so to be respectful of everybody's time, we're just about ten after here. Unless anybody has anything that's really pressing, I think we should probably wrap up now. We've got some follow-up for this engagement subcommittee before the next meeting. At the next meeting, I hope we'll, uh, Jean, Frank and I'll have a consultant report. And, um, you know, in the meantime, I want to just put our next meeting on the calendar, which is July twelfth. I recognize it is summer, and some people might be away. But if you're not away, the meeting will be, uh, the twelfth at six o'clock. And you can participate via Zoom or here in City Hall, as long as I can find the janitor in time to let me in. I'll make sure to bring my own keys next time.
And if you are away, but your companion or family allows you an hour off, since we use Zoom, you can still log in.
That's right.
Excellent point. Okay.
So, all right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, so the motion will informally carry, and, um, we'll stay in touch on email and we'll see y'all at, um, the Zoom or in person on the twelfth. Thank you.